I know, it's like I don't like to go into council.
Call the roll.
Burnson, Chick, Fier, Galanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Podejko, Padilla, really Thomas, one or two acts, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, with council please come to order. Council will please come to order. This is the meeting of the city council on the thirty-first day Halloween, October 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on channel thirty-five, and we're also monitored by council phone. The first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Ms. Goldberg moves. Ms. Galanter, seconds. There's no objections, unanimous vote.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Unanimous vote. Next item.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, Mr. President, there's an item to continue. Item number thirty, it's a closed session item. Council district, council member Goldberg requests that be continued for one day to November first.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. That, which, what item was that?
That was item number thirty.
No objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
That's fine. We have no objection.
Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, you have a confirmation of general manager, confirmation of Ellis M. Stanley. It's item number sixteen. There are two parts to that. There's the confirmation and also the establishment of the salary.
Mr. Ellis Stanley, is he here? Okay. This is a, this is a prove and confirm, any discussion? Has also established his salary.
Prove and confirm?
If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Well, that was easy, wasn't it?
That was easy. Thank you.
You're welcome. That includes the salary?
Yes.
Okay, next item.
Fourth with on that. Next item, Mr. President, items noted for public hearing. Item number one is appeal against annual confirmation, and that's in council district eleven.
Any discussion on this? Any, anybody want to be heard on this? Item one, confirmation assessment, maintenance of sidewalks, Van Nuys Boulevard near Victory Boulevard. Hearing then, the public hearing is closed. Ms. Miskowski moves. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number two is also a public hearing item, however, there is an ordinance on that file. Do you wish to hold that for twelve members?
Yes.
Next item, Mr. President?
Well, let's see if there's a public hearing first. Anybody want to be heard on item number two? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We'll hold it pending twelve members. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items three through eleven. Item number five has two files, two reports on that file.
We'll call that special, but three, four, six through eleven, anybody want to be heard on any of those items? We have no cards. Public hearing is closed. Any discussion on any of them? Any specials by council members? Three through eleven, with the exception of five, which has two, two on one file. Okay, prepare the roll on three, four, six through eleven. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Fourth with on four.
And eight.
Seven and eight, fourth with. Number five, we have, we have budget and finance, and we have ITGS, files recommend difference. Is there anybody that? Mr. Padilla? Okay, you move the budget and finance report. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items twelve through twenty-nine, and I understand from council member Holden's office, he'd like to call that one special. Item number twelve.
Item twelve. Any other, any, anybody want to be heard on any of the items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. And then we have twelve called special, thirteen through twenty-nine, with the exception of sixteen, which has already been acted on. Any specials?
Continue item fifteen for forty-five days.
Item fifteen, continue forty-five days. Is there any objections to that? There's no objections, item fifteen is continued forty-five days. Okay, we have thirteen, fourteen, seventeen through twenty-nine.
Yeah, Mr. President, could I call item twenty-five and item twenty-seven special?
Twenty-five and twenty-seven? Any other special?
Oh, my God.
Okay, prepare, prepare the roll on thirteen.
Twenty-four is up.
Could we have just a little attention, please?
Yes, sir.
Nate Holden never looked better, has he?
Twenty-four is special.
That's all right, did you see the gesture?
Okay, let's, let's, let's come in a little order, please. Not much, but a little. We have thirteen, fourteen, and we have seventeen through twenty-four, twenty-six. Which one did you call special, Mr. Holden?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And you also called ten, twelve special?
Yes.
Twelve and thirteen. I need some airtime today.
Any other specials? Okay, ten, thirteen and fourteen, seventeen through twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Mr. President, you'll have thirteen members now. Do you wish to take up the ordinance on item number two?
Yes. Prepare the roll on item number two. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, item twelve, Mr. Holden?
I think that we need an explanation about how much money we're going to save in this endeavor by giving out this contract, and number one, number two, if it's going to be beneficial until it's hot.
Is there anybody here on item twelve? Want to come forward? Come at the center table. Now, come, come up here. You're a city employee? Give your name, please.
Leonard Applebaum, Chief Accountant, Department of General Services.
Okay, you, did you hear the question Mr. Holden asked?
Yes, I did. We expect to increase our savings by about ten percent, or roughly about seventy to ninety thousand dollars annually.
This is, the taxes that we're paying on fuel?
On diesel fleet.
Diesel fuel, that's number one. Number two, we're giving a contract to, tell us again, who are you giving this contract?
That's Deloitte Touche.
And Deloitte Touche is going to tell us if we can get a rebate or not, right? Do we pay them in the event that we don't get a rebate?
We pay them nothing if we don't get a rebate.
They just get a percentage of what we get back.
Pardon?
They get a percentage of what we?
Yes.
All right, but if it's only seventy thousand dollars a year, annually, then they just get, what percentage of that?
Well, they have, they, they, the contract would call for thirty percent, and we have approximately four years' worth of back revenues due.
Well, if they can just design a plan where we can be reimbursed seventy, seventy thousand dollars, then why can't we do something as simple as that on our own, rather than doing it in contract?
This is a highly specialized field, fuel tax, rebates. Deloitte Touche has the expertise.
Did Deloitte Touche come to you, or did we go to them and ask them to help us?
Well, we went, we went out to, on a request for proposal for major firms.
For this amount of money, huh? All right. Doesn't make sense to me. It seemed like to me that it's almost like doing your income taxes. You've got a formula, you know how much you set aside for each event that occurs over the years, so you can take a look and see, and you can get money back, you get it back, that you should know from prior history.
Yes, sir, but the state gave us the formula of twenty percent, and Deloitte Touche feels that they can increase it substantially.
Yeah, hold on a second. Okay, any other, Mr. Galanter?
Yeah, I noticed that the motion sets up a trust fund, and I wanted to make sure that any money that we save, or I would at least want to suggest that any money that we wind up saving by not having to pay it to the state, is in fact earmarked for use in emissions reduction programs here. So can somebody explain, maybe you're the person who can explain. I'm over here, the other side, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the emissions program.
Okay, well, the, the, it would be helpful, it seems to me, since we're talking about a fuel tax, what we want to try to do, we're doing a lot of work, you may not be the person to answer this, in which case, don't waste your time trying, and I'll get somebody else. But most of the work that we do in the city relating to fuel involves trying to switch to alternate fuels and not using gasoline for our vehicles. So the question is whether if we're going to save money, let's say we save a hundred thousand dollars, or a million dollars, or whatever it is, what do we have to do to earmark the, that savings to go into furthering our emissions reduction programs here in the city? And I don't think it's fair to ask you that question. So can we find somebody who can answer this question for me?
Just modify the motion statement?
Modify the motion, thank you. Mr. Fujio?
Just stand right here and tell me how I want to modify this motion. No, just a motion, just the money, the money sent to this trust fund will be, we get it.
Okay, I move that the money that is put into this trust fund be earmarked for contributing to the city's ongoing emissions reduction programs. Doesn't change hiring Deloitte Touche?
No.
Doesn't change setting up the trust fund, we still set it up. What it does is to say that instead of just throwing the savings into a general pot, we're going to use it for a program related to fuel issues.
Second, for Tracy's prompting.
That's what we pay her for.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg?
Actually, I was going to ask them the questions they've already given.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I rise to speak. I want to thank council member Chick for having covered committee that day, I wasn't able to chair, but on item number one in the committee report of the recommendations, it ends with the timeline given for the rebate amounts only in the last three years. Now, understand there's been some second consideration or additional consideration given to that timeline, is there?
Yes, sir.
You want to add to that?
Yes, sir. Because the city is presently under audit by the state, Deloitte Touche believes that they could go back beyond the three years and get more money for an earlier period beyond the three years.
Any specific timeline that you would now suggest, or should we just change the language in the committee report to not say three years, but just say?
It would be safer to, just change the language and say prior.
End earlier.
On any of them, any specials by council members. Three through eleven with the exception of five, which has two. Two on one file. Okay, prepare the roll on three, four, six through eleven. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Fourth with on four. Huh?
And eight.
Seven and eight, fourth with. Uh, number five, we have, uh... We have Budget and Finance and we have ITGS files recommend difference. Is there anybody that... Mr. Padilla? Okay, you move a Budget and Finance report. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items twelve through twenty-nine, and I understand from Councilmember Holden's office, he'd like to call that one special. Item number twelve.
Item twelve. Any other, any, anybody want to be heard in any of the items? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. And then we have twelve called special, thirteen through twenty-nine with the exception of sixteen, which has already been acted on. Any specials?
Continue item fifteen for forty-five days.
Item fifteen, continue forty-five days. Is there any objections to that? There are no objections. Item fifteen is continued forty-five days. Okay, we have thirteen, fourteen, seventeen through twenty-nine.
Yeah, Mr. President, could I call item twenty-five and item twenty-seven special?
Twenty-five and twenty-seven? Any other special?
Oh, my God.
Okay. Prepare the roll on thirteen.
Twenty-four is up.
Could we have just a little attention, please? Nate Holden never looked better, has he?
Twenty-four is special.
Okay, let's, uh, let's come in a little order, please, not much, but a little. We have thirteen, fourteen, and we have seventeen through twenty-four, twenty-six. Which one did you call special, Mr. Holden?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
And you also called ten, twelve special?
Yes.
I need some airtime today.
Are any other specials? Okay, ten, thirteen and fourteen, seventeen through twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Uh, Mr. President, you'll have thirteen members now. Do you wish to take up the ordinance on item number two?
Yes. Prepare the roll on item number two. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, item twelve, Mr. Holden?
I think that we need an explanation about how much money we're going to save in this endeavor by giving out this contract, and number one, number two, uh, if it's going to be beneficial, then tell us how.
Is there anybody here on item twelve? Want to come forward? Come at the center table. Now, come, come up here. You're a city employee? Give your name, please.
Leonard Applebaum, Chief Accountant, Department of General Services.
Okay, you, did you hear the question Mr. Holden asked?
Yes, I did. We expect to increase our savings by about ten percent or roughly about seventy to ninety thousand dollars annually.
This is, uh, the taxes that we're paying on fuel?
On diesel fleet.
Diesel fuel, that's number one. Number two, are we giving a contract to... Tell us again, who are you giving this contract?
That's Deloitte Tush.
And Deloitte Tush is going to tell us if we can get a rebate or not, right? Do we pay them in the event that we don't get a rebate?
We pay them nothing if we don't get a rebate.
They just get a percentage of what we get back.
Pardon?
They get a percentage of what we...
Yes.
All right, but if it's only seventy thousand dollars a year, annually, then they just get what percentage of that?
Well, they have, they, they, the contract would call for thirty percent, and we have approximately four years' worth of back revenues due.
Well, if they can just design a plan where we can be reimbursed seventy, seventy thousand dollars, then why can't we do something as simple as that on our own, rather than doing it in contract?
This is a highly specialized field, fuel tax, uh, rebates. Deloitte Tush has the expertise.
Did Deloitte Tush come to you, or did we go to them and ask them to help us?
Well, uh, we went, we went out to, on a request for proposal for major firms.
For this amount of money, huh? All right. Doesn't make sense to me. It seemed like to me that it's almost like doing your income taxes. You got a formula, you know how much you set aside for each event that occurs over the years, so you can take a look and see, and you can get money back, you get it back, that you should know from prior history.
Yes, sir, but, uh, the state gave us the formula of twenty percent, and Deloitte Tush feels that they can increase it substantially.
Yeah, hold on a second. Okay, any other, Mr. Calenter?
Yeah, I noticed that the motion sets up a trust fund, and I wanted to make sure that any money that we save, or I would at least want to suggest that any money that we wind up saving by not having to pay it to the state is in fact earmarked for use in emissions reduction programs here. So can somebody explain, maybe you're the person who can explain, I'm over here, the other side, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the emissions program.
Okay, well, the, the, uh, it would be helpful, it seems to me, since we're talking about a fuel tax, what we want to try to do, we're doing a lot of work, you may not be the person to answer this, in which case, don't waste your time trying, and I'll get somebody else, but, um, most of the work that we do in the city relating to fuel involves trying to switch to alternate fuels and not using gasoline for our vehicles. So the question is whether if we're going to save money, let's say we save a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars or whatever it is, what do we have to do to earmark the, that savings to go into furthering our emissions reduction programs here in the city? And I don't think it's fair to ask you that question, so can we find somebody who can answer this question for me? Modify the motion, thank you. Mr. Fujio? Just stand right here and tell me how I want to modify this motion.
No, just a motion, just that the money, the money sent to this trust fund will be...
Okay, I move that the money that is put into this trust fund be earmarked for contributing to the city's ongoing emissions reduction programs. Doesn't change hiring Deloitte Tush.
No.
Doesn't change setting up the trust fund, we still set it up. What it does is to say that instead of just throwing the savings into a general pot, we're going to use it for a program related to fuel issues.
Second, for Tracy's prompting.
That's what we pay her for.
Okay, Ms. Goldberg?
Actually, I was going to ask them some questions they've already given.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I rise to speak. I want to thank Councilmember Chick for having covered committee that day, I wasn't able to chair, but on item number one in the committee report of the recommendations, it ends with the timeline given for the rebate amounts only in the last three years. Now, I understand there's been some second consideration or additional consideration given to that timeline, is there...
Yes, sir.
You want to add to that?
Yes, sir. Because the city is presently under audit by the state, Deloitte Tush believes that they could go back beyond the three years and get more money for an earlier period beyond the three years.
Any specific timeline that you would now suggest, or should we just change the language in the committee report to not say three years, but just say...
It would be safer to just change the language and say prior, anything prior to three years.
Okay, I would so move, Mr. President.
We have two, two motions now. Our Mrs. Chick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm very supportive of our going ahead and always looking for accessing dollars that we're entitled to and we, we don't have. But I'm curious to know if there are other ideas that either the department or Deloitte Tush has in terms of other entitlement monies, for lack of a better term, that the city is not accessing to our full advantage? Or are they only looking at this one very specific program?
The draft of the contract calls for them looking into aviation fuel excise taxes, federal and state, yes.
Okay.
And they will advise us in that regard.
Well, colleagues, I think this is a very good example of what we need to do more of, and a motion that I introduced last week is in fact looking at other areas where perhaps there are dollars, not only debt uncollected by the city and owed us, but an example, for instance, on ambulance billings, that there are patients that have Medicare coverage to which they're entitled, but perhaps don't even know that, that would be good for them and also allow the city then to be reimbursed for emergency medical services. So I, I hope we're very successful in this program in that it leads to other similar types of funds.
Ms. Calenter? Ruth? Are you satisfied with what his motion, what Mr. Padilla's motion again, please? What is it?
Oh, his motion was to change the language in the recommendation number one of the committee report for prior to three years.
They're looking at more years of data than just the last three, that's fine. I second it if nobody else.
There's, Ms. Calenter seconds, there's, prepare the roll on Mr. Padilla's motion, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Now we have Ms. Calenter's motion. Prepare the roll on Ms. Calenter's motion. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Now we have, we have twelve as amended. Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Applebaum. Next item.
Uh, next item, Mr. President, item number twenty-four, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden? You called twenty-four special?
Yeah, Mr. President, members, that, hey, that camera's not on me up there. What's going on? We have to have a report from Department of Transportation, I want to know why they're negotiating. There you go, that's, that's all right. Why are you negotiating with the MTA when the MTA has already agreed to reimburse the city for that amount? It's called a negotiation, and I want to know why it's necessary to negotiate rather than just saying submit them a bill?
Is there somebody from the Transportation Department?
Just submit them an invoice and let them pay up. If you've got to negotiate, then the MTA is going to say, well, we don't owe that amount of money at all for the services that we provided during the strike.
Phil Aker from Department of Transportation. We're going to negotiate an agreement with...
Just talk, talk straight ahead on the microphone.
We're going to negotiate an agreement with MTA for them to pay us for our services during the strike. Actually, just... We're not paying, okay. They, they've agreed to pay, our contractors will provide us with an invoice for the services they provided.
Oh, so then why the word is negotiation in this motion? Just say you're going to submit an invoice and you should be reimbursed for services provided.
Let me take a look.
Yeah, please. Well, the phantom, you know, has got to make sure that this thing gets done right. Otherwise, otherwise I have to sing. Yeah, I got you. Yeah, go ahead, explain that.
First of all, we're going to reach an agreement with the MTA. Then we're going to, then you're going to authorize us to pay, to receive the money from the MTA and to pay our contractors, then we're going to modify the agreements with our contractors for them to accept the money.
Well, that's, that's just a formality. My question is, why is it necessary to negotiate with MTA for the money when, when you've already had a stipulated agreement with MTA that they're going to pay you for the services rendered during the strike period? So therefore, this, part of this report should be saying, we're going to submit a invoice to MTA for a specified amount of monies for the services that we provided. We don't know what that is, you should be telling us that, what is, how much it's going to be, et cetera.
No, we, we don't have, we don't have a written agreement with MTA for them to pay.
So it was verbal, it was a verbal agreement then, huh?
That's correct.
Did the board, did MTA board vote to say, okay, let's have the city provide additional transportation?
I don't know, I don't know that.
Well, then why would we, they can tell us no, and they should tell you no. If you don't have anything in writing, if you don't have an action on the part of the board, they're saying, do this and we'll reimburse you, then you did it on your own.
I think all of the municipal operators in Los Angeles County did the same thing.
Well, you know how they are over there, except for Mr. Burnson. You may never see the light of day of this money. I'll vote for it, but sloppy, sloppy, you know, sloppy operation here. All right.
Mr. Burnson?
Yeah, I, I was, I kiddingly said you won't get paid, but I, I think the city was very kind and very thoughtful, thinking of a lot of the people that had no means of getting to their jobs and so forth, and DOT was kind enough to make some basic service available to assist MTA in type, time of a crisis. And I don't think there's going to be any problem, this is a simple matter of conferring and, and reaching an agreement on the amount, and I think that there shouldn't be any problem on that. So I would urge an eye vote.
I think I could add at this point, we carried about a fifty percent increase in ridership during that period, and I think was very welcome by the people who didn't have a way to get around.
Okay, prepare the roll on twenty-four. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Francis, hold on a second. Okay, number twenty-five is...
Item twenty-five called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez?
Uh, Mr. President, before I speak on item twenty-five, is it possible to forthwith on item twenty-six? Could you forthwith item twenty-six on behalf of Mr. Subornich? Members of the council, the reason I called item twenty-five special was to refresh our memories. Hopefully, everybody's here listening, but when we were in the old City Hall building, the Veterans of Foreign Wars used to run the concession for years. And we changed that, and we used to have a cafeteria, I don't, some of us remember, there was a great cafeteria at City Hall, that basically, in the remodeling, we basically said we would bring back, but we had to relocate and close down during construction phases. This is before the earthquake. But what we did is we ended up opening up a snack shop on the second floor that was basically run by Project Restore. And I think Mr. Wax will remember that that snack shop that was run by Project Restore on the second floor was basically an improvement from the Veterans of Foreign Wars snack shop. And the reason we had Project Restore running it was we felt that there had to be something in the building to remind people about what Project Restore was about. They also brought some of the employees from the snack shop onboard, I, I don't know if everybody remembers Cory and Tony, and used to be able to go in that shop and buy alley fire department hats, alley PD hats. Whenever Environmental Affairs had a special project, they would provide some of the cups, and it was, it was basically our snack shop. Now, the motion that's before us is asking us to put that space...
Mike, can we have some quiet in the council chamber, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion that's before us is asking us to put up that space to an RFP. And I would argue contrary. I would say that what we want to do is try and figure out how it is that the snack shop that's going to be at City Hall serve a greater purpose. And that greater purpose could be promoting the city. It could be basically promoting Project Restore, because Project Restore was not only about City Hall, it was other city-owned historic buildings. It could be Rexon Parks, who runs it to promote the park program. It could be Lhasa to benefit the homeless. And so my concern is about putting it out to RFP is now it becomes again a for-profit venture that moves into City Hall. And I would like us to basically take this back, ask General Services with conjunction with the CLA and the CAO to think of some of the things that could operate out of that space. I've always envisioned a city store as part of a snack shop, so that the city of Los Angeles could promote itself. And so rather than putting it out to RFP, I would ask that maybe the CLA, CAO, and General Services come back with a report that kind of takes into consideration what we had there before. I think we've lost that particular aspect as we're constructing a new City Hall. And I just think it's a wonderful opportunity we don't want to lose. Because I know that when we made the improvement from the original snack shop to the Project Restore snack shop, everybody thought it was a great improvement. And the only reason we had to close it down was because of reconstruction. And so I just didn't want to lose that history, I wanted to remind us about it and leave those options open so that we could reconsider it. So with the permission of the Chair of ITA and General Services, I just want to kind of say, can we hold this on the table? Maybe we ask the CLA, the CAO, in conjunction with General Services, come back with a report on how it is that we could use that space as, for purposes of benefiting the city. And still run the snack shop.
This is, uh, what the purpose of this motion was is that currently there are no places, we do not have any plans within City Hall to have a snack shop at all. The prior space is being used for other purposes. And we have one space that could be used for a snack shop, and what we wanted to do is give the opportunity for, to see what kind of interest there was to bring one and make sure that the council was interested in having one in City Hall.
Mr. Deaton, I, I take objection to what you just said because I was a council member who was fighting to preserve space for Project Restore on, on the second floor. And I think you sat not on this particular desk, but you sat in front of the entire council when we were at the old City Hall and told us that that space would be recreated. We would be able to have the same kind of space in City Hall. And you're saying something completely different right now from what you told us at the time when we were initially dealing with the remodeling of City Hall. I'm just trying to say that because that was something I was fighting for on an ongoing basis. Now you're telling me we weren't even planning for that kind of space in that, in City Hall.
I don't recall that statement, but I, I'll trust that, that you correctly are repeating it. This is an attempt to provide for a snack shop on the second floor, it won't be exactly where it was. I don't believe that Project Restore has an interest in, in actually running it. The, what would be, I have no problems if the proceeds from this go to any purpose. It's in large part a situation of having the convenience for the, the employees within, within City Hall and making sure that, that there is an interest on the, on the private sector to do something there if, if the terms and conditions were correct. On, as it relates to some of the things you're talking about, I have no problems if you want to put this on, hold this and, and for a couple of days and we can come back with them. There's some other things that we're thinking about doing on, in City Hall, notwithstanding the snack shop, that I think would be more in line with what you're talking about in terms of Project Restore and some other things that we're contemplating, we'd be happy to bring that.
And maybe you want to make that presentation to us so that we understand everything you're contemplating. I won't be on the city council, but I will be one of those people visiting. And I, I just think it's important that we keep in mind, I, I just remember what we went through, and I was chairing at the time the administration committee, and I remember what we went through to create the space, and it was an excellent space compared to what we had before when we created the space for Project Restore. Everybody thought it was a good idea. Now we basically don't have that space, is what you're saying, but you have some other things that might be happening there that will replace it. I just would like to know what all that's going to be about.
That'd be fine. I think that the, what we have attempted to do, and we've been working with Project Restore and the historic community, is to bring the City Hall back historically in some of these areas to what it was originally. And to refurbish as much as we can in that context. And, but if you want to put it on the table for, until Friday or until, let's, how about next Tuesday, not Friday?
Okay.
We have a lot of people who want to be heard on, on, Mr. Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mike, for bringing up those very important suggestions and, and history on this issue. But I don't think they necessarily conflict, so let's agree to the one we continue into, allow us more time to think about it, talk about it some more, be on the same page, and maybe flesh out more details in writing. But I don't necessarily think that a snack shop and then, you know, Project Restore's presence in some way, shape, or form, and the promotion of the city and, and goods that say city of Los Angeles and the city seal are necessarily conflicting. So let's see how we can mesh those together, give more detail to this RFP, and let's get it out.
Okay, Mrs. Walters?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to say that I have a different view of the history of the snack shop and what was planned when we moved out. Project Restore had some great difficulty in operating that, and I understand that they were not interested in doing anything else and that the space was needed for whatever. But this is going to go over until Tuesday, and I would simply suggest that if it's going to be run by anybody, it needs to be run by somebody qualified to do so, and that the proceeds need to be very clearly delineated where they're going and what they're to address. So I will look forward to it coming back next week. Thank you.
Sakowski?
I, I rise to concur and actually thank Mr. Hernandez as well. This was, I'm not quite sure how we would go out for an RFP and have people who would bid if we tell them that all the proceeds and the profits are supposed to go back to city goods, city Project Restore, or anything else we would designate. And although Mr. Deaton said he didn't think Project Restore was interested in running it, I think we should definitively call Project Restore and find out if they are interested in running it because they did an excellent job hiring the two people who ran it last time. It was, as Mike said, a far better installation than the old American Legion one. It had brightness, light, it was a gathering spot not only for employees in City Hall and councilmembers, but for everyone from in the public as well. So it made a lot of sense, and I would like to see us answer those questions if we bring it back next week. And as I said, my concern is that if we still go out for an RFP, that somebody's going to do this not for profit, if all the profits are going to go to city goods, a city entity, then it might not make sense. We also had during the DNC, people who came to us with proposals about city goods and things carrying the city logo. I think whether or not this can be part of that or just another extension, we ought to be looking at that identity of a city store with city goods because there really will be a market for them. So hopefully, within the week, we can answer some of these questions and figure out which is the way we should go.
Yes, the only question I had really is tangential, but, but referred by this. I was hoping that we would eventually have a cafeteria back in the City Hall. Because when I first came into office, there was a cafeteria, and I found it extremely useful, and I, I think many city employees did too. Are we planning to do that at all? Never again, huh? Gee, I think that's a shame. If you look at the cafeteria over at DWP, it does really well. Times has a cafeteria that does well. I mean, it just, it's just, it's a convenience, the food is freshly made, you don't buy just things that vendors have, you know, packaged up with cellophane. So there's no, no, no opportunity for that yet left.
I mean, we could, clearly, when we move people out of the mall, we could have a cafeteria. I'm not, I haven't thought this through, but...
Okay, well, I just...
There are places in the, in the area that we could do that.
That when we have as many people concentrated as we have between these two buildings, to have an employee cafeteria is not a bad idea. And it gives people an opportunity to buy things that are a lot different than fried fast foods or packaged things that have been wrapped up in cellophane. And I just think it's something we ought to look at, and I would urge us to do that.
Mr. Hernandez? Okay, you have to see. Okay, then, then we approve the report. Prepare the roll.
No, we're actually going to continue until next Tuesday, and we'll come back.
Okay, doesn't matter, we continue until Tuesday. Next item.
Item number twenty-seven called...
Item number 27 called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, one, I rise to support the spirit of item 27. Just to get some mechanics out of the way real quick, I would like it to also go to the Community Economic Development Committee, being that the Neighborhood Preservation Program, those monies come out of the block grant. One of the issues, and I shared with Mr. Padilla, some of the legislative history I've had in trying to make sewer hookups more affordable. And the fact that Mr. Wax worked very closely with us in trying to deal with some of the issues of sewer hookups fees and the limitations we had. And so, for example, we extended the timeframe to be able to pay for sewer hookup fees. And I don't know how that program is working. Part of the concern is, most of the people who will be required to basically, or would like to hook up to sewers, own their homes. And so when you talk about a poverty qualification ratio, that's a different kind of story. And our Neighborhood Preservation Program doesn't necessarily work with a single household, it works within a census tract. And I, I am more concerned about the universal question that I think that Mr. Padilla's asking, is how do we make sewer hookups more affordable to constituents, regardless of where they are in the city? Because at the same time as a city, we want to deal with the issue of septic tanks and, and that kind of a system. And so normally, when you're talking about sewer hookups, you're talking about a census tract and a lot of households who need to reach that compliance. And this program would be very expensive if it was done at one household at a time. And so I am asking that they report back to CED as to how it is that the block grant can contribute to that kind of a program. I don't think it would necessarily be just limited to the NPP, the Neighborhood Preservation FUDs, that come out of block grant. I think it could be a program that is designated in an area. And I don't think that we necessarily have to pay the full amount of sewer hookups, but rather can create a strong enough incentive to create a partnership to make those kinds of things happen. And so I would just ask that the, the report come back also to CED, and that the report look at an overall program, not limited to the Neighborhood Preservation Program. I think that would satisfy some of the needs that Mr. Padilla's seeing in his district, also some of the needs I might have in my district, and Ms. Goldberg might have in hers, Mr. Wax might have in his. But if we design a program for those low-poverty census tracts that qualify, where some block grant can be used, and it could be a 50% program, if you sign up within a certain frame, and then you can pay your 50% over a period of years, it might be a doable thing, where we could approach it at a census tract at a time and, and help many more homes qualify.
Padilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's amazing what happens when you put your heads together, right, Mike? Well, thank you for your support on this motion, and I thank you for the work that you've done in previous years on this issue. And you're right, this is just a piece of an overall approach to address the issue. And I want to emphasize, this isn't just for my district, but it is sort of citywide policy and a citywide effort that we need to continue to pursue. Although I will be selfish here, knowing that there's a high concentration of this problem existing in my district. And, Mike, I think that's a great idea, to look at the consolidated plan of block grant dollars as a whole, not just NPP, to do this. And I know there's two things going on right now, soon before your committee. One will be the next year's consolidated plan, and at the same time, you're looking at the previous year of block grant dollars that have not been expended, and new ways to reprogram those dollars and get them moving much, much quicker. And so I'd urge the committee, under your chairmanship, to also put this at the higher priority levels. Thank you.
Twenty, 27 before us. Prepare the roll.
That includes an amendment for it to go through CED?
Yeah. Yeah, as amended. Unanimous vote. Prepare the roll, rather. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
That is approved. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, you have special one on the desk. It's a motion presented by Councilmember Padilla, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Prepare the roll on the findings, please. Prepare the, would you, give us the findings?
Mr. Chair...
Quiet, please.
Mr. President, this is a reward motion for a murder that happened on July 29th in front of 8440 San Fernando Road, where Ruben Mejia was, a Sun Valley resident, was beaten to death. The police have asked for this reward to get help from the community to solve this crime.
Prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
Okay, we have the matter before, special one. Any discussion? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
That is approved. Forthwith on that item. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, you have special two. It's a motion presented by Councilmember Fuhr, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Prepare the, give us the findings, please.
Thank you. On October 25th, the Budget and Finance Committee adopted a transmittal from ORS recommending the approval of general obligation bond issuance for library capital program. When this was, when the report was forwarded to the council for their approval, inadvertently, the approval and adoption of the POS and the bid-sale resolution were excluded. The bond councils indicated that this has to happen before the POS and bid-sale resolution can be adopted, before it can legally proceed, and also, it has to be distributed to the underwriters by tomorrow, November 1st.
Okay, prepare the roll on the findings. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
That is approved. Next item. Okay, prepare the roll on the matter. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen i's.
That is approved. Forthwith on that item. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is the, this is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Do we have anybody that wants to be heard on a public comment? Do we have no cards? Have no cards? Public comment parade? Is closed. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Yeah, all those people not involved with the executive session, please leave the council chamber. All those not involved in the executive session, please leave the council chamber. Okay, let's clear the desk while we...
You have motions for posting and referral.
Unanimous vote.
Council has an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Burnson requests to be excused Wednesday, November 22nd. Personal business meets council policy.
Unanimous vote.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Okay. Ruth, we got a closed session now, those people not involved. Okay. Anything else before the council?
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Any adjournment motion?
Yeah. I have one.
Mr. Burnson?
Yes. Yes, members of the council, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Helen Bizar, who passed away on October 28th. She's survived by her son, Donald, who is a son-in-law to one of my friends from Temple Romazion of many years, Manny Rubenfield's son-in-law. So I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Helen Bizar.
Mr. President?
Mr. President, members, it was sad to hear that the actor, Anthony Lee, was accidentally shot while being in a, at a Halloween party, displaying a replica weapon toward a police officer. And two good people, so I'm told, the police officers, is a graduate from USC and associate of my press deputy, Dana. And it turns out that the individual, Mr. Lee, was an actor and well-known and well-respected in the community. He just goes to show how two good people come together and then tragedy results. They both need our support, both families, and our good wishes and prayers, and for both. They both, Mr. Lee is dead and gone, will not return, but the officer will suffer pain for years to come. And I want to give a little story. When we had a replica gun weapon ordinance in the city, a six-year-old kid was at home 12 years ago, and the police went to visit because they were called by the neighbors. And as they entered the apartment, the kid put the gun, the toy gun, outside of the door and the cop killed him. And that cop has suffered ever since. So this is another tragedy, and we have to be mindful that these toy weapons are nothing to play with.
Mr. Wax?
Yes, I'd like the council first to adjourn in memory of Kathleen Louise Thrush, who is the mother of my planning deputy, Dale Thrush. She was the mother of 11 children, survived by nine of them.
All members.
And I'll give the clerk the pertinent information. And also Perry Stern Hurst, who passed away at 100, who was the father of a friend of mine, and I think some of you in the council, Perry Hurst Jr. And I'll give the clerk the pertinent information. Hundred.
Is either one at Tishman? Yeah, I'd like to second that. Call the roll. Oh, wait, Miss, Miss Walters, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'd like to ask the council to adjourn in memory of Hal Kimball III, who passed away on this past Wednesday about 9:00 a.m. He was 41 years old and passed away in sleep. His birthday was just the week before, the 16th of October. He is survived by his wife and two children, a son 18, a daughter 12. His family, his father and mother, and his uncles were all involved in education. His father and his uncles were school, LAUSD administrators, very active in the community. His mother was a teacher in Compton. They're a very good family, worked hard for not only the schools where they were, not only the district, but involved in the community, trying to make it a better place. And it's very, very sad, and the cause of death is unknown.
Hi, the council is adjourned.